Ms. Smith, I'm a teacher at Short Ridge High School and the staff advisor for the student government. As you all know, Short Ridge has a great storied legacy of political involvement, advocacy, community involvement, and social justice. And on behalf of the student government, I am very honored to welcome our first virtual candidate forum. It's been, it's helped by the PTSA at Short Ridge as well. So right now, I'm going to turn it over to our interim student government president, Senior Elad Nicholas Kaufman. Elad?
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. So the forum, we're going to ask a couple of quick questions. Plus, just each question, you'll have 60 seconds to respond, and I'll go out and call each candidate. And then you'll have 30 seconds at the end to give a closing statement. So I guess without further ado, I'll start, I'll start with our first question, sort of an opening statement. Could you please introduce yourself and explain why you're running for IPS? So first of all, from District One, Mr. Pritchard.
Okay, thank you, Elad. Thanks for organizing this. This is really a great, you know, great thing for the students to do. Really cool. Love it. So my name's Will Pritchard. I'm running in District One, and which is predominantly the East Side. And I am a parent of two IPS kids. They're in third and fourth grade. They've been at IPS for the last three and four years, so we've made a long-term commitment to IPS. I think we had to have good parent representation on the board, which is partly why I'm running. I've been a public school student my whole life, so I've had a lot of experience in public schools. I've also been a coach in youth sports, and I've been reading in IPS classrooms with the United Way. So for the last 20 years, I've also been working in community development, helping neighborhood-based organizations revitalize neighborhoods in the IPS district. A lot on the East Side, I've been working with community development corporations and community centers and business associations and neighborhood associations to help build their capacity and help to revitalize neighborhoods. So part of that process has always been centered around schools and the importance of a good school in stabilizing a neighborhood, which is partly also why I'm running. So I'm glad to be here, and thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Now, next, also from District One, Mr. Randall.
Hello, hello. Good evening. So my name is Brandon Randall. I am a near-East Side resident over in the Inglewood neighborhood. I decided to run because I have worked with students and families on the front lines directly every single day for 13 years. And so I decided that I love grassroots, I love being a community organizer and a youth worker, but I wanted to step it up and make a difference on a more systemic level. So I wanted to run for school boards to be able to impact policies and procedures that can better serve our students and families, but also work with the amazing educators who, you know, have made this commitment to serving our students every day. I've been a mentor, I've been a tutor. But most importantly, I'm just a consistent person in the lives of a lot of young people, and they depend on me. And so I want to make sure that I am fulfilling that role of a leader and an advocate and just creating spaces and opportunities for them to continue to demonstrate their own leadership skills. So I'm excited to be here, and thank you all for having me.
Thank you very much. And next, we have from District Two, Mr. Winston.
Good evening. My name is Dequavis Winston, running for IPS School Board, District Two. I'm running for the last six years, I've been an educator, a coach, and a mentor. I've worked at schools here in IPS and around the county. And so I've seen what schools do, what our teachers do, our support staff, our students, the things that they need to support them. I've seen what works and what does not work. Some of the things that motivated me to run was, you know, equity, accountability, and transparency shouldn't be an afterthought. And it also shouldn't be a hashtag of the work that we're doing. We should just be doing the work. And so those, some of the things that motivated me, I want to make sure, you know, our students are getting the things they need, as well as our families and the teachers, and that we're also, you know, keeping IPS, you know, we always say we're proud to be public, and so I want to make sure that we keep IPS public. And so that's why I'm running for school board.
Thank you. Next, I'm next from District Four, Commissioner Arnold.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the invitation. I'm running for IPS School Board because I believe I'm the best candidate. I was actually on the board when the IB High School program was started, started at Gamble, eventually moved to Short Ridge. Very proud of that, that we were able to attract some of our students that previously we had lost when they were going into high school. Worked hard to get Washington High School reopened when it closed. Worked hard to keep Washington open during this last round of school closings. I support our superintendent. I supported the referendum that gave teachers and other employees the highest pay raises that they had received and made our teacher's salary comparable with the other districts, surrounding districts. I support our superintendent and her passion for racial equity. I look forward to remaining on the board to implement those racial policies and to move us into implementation and the procedures that will every student be able to have a equitable, high-quality education in our district.
Thank you very much. And also from District Four, Ms. Smith.
Hi, thank you for having us. My name's Christina Smith. I am running in District Four, which is, it goes about Hoville all the way down around to past Fountain Square. And I am running because, as a parent and having kids in the district for the past eight years, I have seen how decisions that the board has made have directly affected classrooms and resources and my children's education. So I know that IPS is an incredibly inequitable system when it comes to delivering education and instruction to our students. So we have the system of inequity, we have inequitable funding, and I'm running because I want every single child in IPS to be able to have a fantastic, robust, great education like I feel like my children are getting. And I think that the way that we have to tackle that is by bringing equity back to our system. So I'm really running in order to change IPS so that we are providing that equitable education to all students.
Thank you very much. Now, from the at-large district, from the at-large district, Commissioner Gore.
Commissioner Gore, your mic is muted.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I am running because my mantra is reclaiming the legacy and fighting for the future of the children of IPS. And when I say reclaiming the legacy, it's people like you, Elad, people who have graduated already from IPS, who are doing great things in the community. They are now lawyers, doctors. Some of them are doing great things in our skilled positions out in the community, as well as all over the United States. I am a mother. I am also a graduate of IPS. My children went on to do well. So I understand what public school can do for our children. I have been on the board for eight years. I enjoy what I'm doing. I'd like the opportunity to come back on the board and, like I said, fight for the future of our children. This is a new normal. And in this new normal, there will be changes for our children's education. I'd like to be part of that change. I'd like to be able to help policies or make policies that will give our children an equal opportunity to get a quality education. I am really now looking forward to the Black Lives Matter policy that we put together, which will cause equity among each school so that all of our children will receive resources. So I guess I could talk a long time about IPS and public schools, but I'd love to be able to be re-elected to the board so that I could work with our leadership to continue the policies that we put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. And also from the at-large district, Mr. Allen.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to share. My name is Kenneth Allen. I am running for Indianapolis Public School Board in large. First and foremost, I'm a product of public school education. My mother was an educator in the public school system for 36 years before she passed away. My first experience working directly with young people was in a public school setting. As a kid, teaching young people entrepreneurship. Every job I've had over my professional career has been working directly with young people. Served as the page coordinator for the Indiana House of Representatives. Also, I worked at the Marion County Juvenile Detention Center, and I currently serve as a program director for Indiana Youth Service Association. Indiana Youth Service Association, and I run our anti-human trafficking program that prevents and helps young people that are affected by both sex and labor trafficking. I'm also a parent of two school-aged children who happen to be in public school. And I have also recently served as the chair of the Indiana Commission on the Social Status of Black Males. And when I looked at the data that we get as the commission in education, when I look at the disparities between our Black and Brown children, I couldn't just simply sit there and do anything. So I felt at this time, you know, given everything going on in our community, in our country, and my experience in board governance and working directly with young people, it was an opportunity to advance my service. I'm excited to be here and look forward to our conversation.
Thank you very much. So now, we'll move on to, now we'll move on to our next question. So, Short Ridge recently held a racial equity forum, and we discussed issues such as achievement gaps between white students and students of color. And how would you plan to address these gaps as a board member, Commissioner Gore?
Thank you, Elad. I would like to address those achievement gaps. As I always say, teachers first in the classroom need to have high expectations of our children. We also need, in our schools, to be able to be given resources so that our children can get books, they can get the equipment that's needed, and be able to not just be tested on what they're taught, well, being taught to the test, but being given a test to find out where they are, what their needs are, and what can help them to be able to achieve in the class. There's 75% Black and Brown children in the IPS district. Right now, there is a very high achievement gap. I would like to see that achievement gap reduced. And one of the ways I think we can reduce it is by not looking at suspensions. I know that we've reduced a lot of the expulsions, but when a child is suspended, he or she cannot learn at home. And so I think we need to look at that element of the school system as well so that that would help make our child, our children, reduce that achievement gap. But I do feel that every child comes to school with the initiative to learn because you just don't wake up early in the morning sometimes just to come to school. So I think if our teachers began to have high expectations, our children will try to attain. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Randall?
Yes.
Sorry, wrong order. Sorry, Mr. Allen?
I was ready.
Yes, thank you. So I think that it's very important that we look at the curriculum the district utilizes. I think it's very important that the curriculum that the district uses is culturally comprehensive, meaning that it is a reflection of the students that we serve. Oftentimes, our children that are matriculating through public schools don't see themselves in the curriculum, therefore, they don't connect. So in addition to that, I also think that it's imperative that we have educators and school leaders in the classroom that reflect the population that we serve. And then thoroughly, I think that it's, we have to be able to teach our children early on the connection between economics and education, so what they're learning in the classroom, how that will connect to them actually making money. I know for me, as a young person matriculating through the school system, when I learned about entrepreneurship and how to start my own business, it allowed me to do better in math and reading. So I think that the more we can teach young people financial literacy, entrepreneurship, the more we can have school leaders and teachers who look like them in the classroom, and also the more we can invest in curriculum that reflects the population we serve, I think we can do better.
Thank you very much. Now, from District One, Mr. Randall.
Yes, so I think that there are several ways to address racial equity. So I think the main focus needs to be this understanding of cultural competence. So we do have a Black Lives Matter resolution. We do have the racial equity policies. But we have to do more than just creating, you know, these policies. We have to reshift this culture and climate in the district. And that means from the superintendent all the way down to the individual-level schools. You know, we have to understand that if we don't change policies but also hold people accountable, then all we're doing is putting things on paper, and we're not really creating, you know, long-term impact. So we have to look at how implicit bias navigates through all areas of education, whether that's curriculum, whether that's hiring procedures, whether that's disciplinary policies. A lot of times, we talk about suspensions and expulsions because the data is very clear. There's no gray area when we look at how Black and Brown students are disciplined. What we don't have conversations enough on is school arrest and the interaction with law enforcement. And so we have to understand how that impacts student learning as well, and that impacts, you know, the opportunity gaps. I think we also have to focus on individualized learning. We have to also understand that students' needs are more than just the classroom. You know, I've had teachers tell me in the past that students need to leave their trauma and their issues at home, and they need to just come ready to learn. Well, that's just not the reality of how the world works. So we have to have schools that understand the impact of trauma and the impact of just life in general, and look through a racial equity lens, a critical race lens, and be able to really serve our students of color, specifically our Black and Brown students.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Pritchard.
Elad, I agree with everything that's been said so far. A lot of good points about zero discipline policies. Obviously, we need to change those. They're very disparate right now. Like Mr. Allen's comments about the curriculum, absolutely need to change the curriculum, include more history and culture that is reflective of Black and Brown populations. I think we need to add more teachers of color that reflect the student population. We have, I can't remember, maybe Mrs. Gore said, we have approximately 75% of the kids that are Black or Brown, but less than 3% of the teachers are actually Hispanic, and only about 20% of the teachers are Black. So studies have shown that teachers, kids that feel like they share a life connection with teachers learn better. So we need to increase the number of teachers of color at IPS. And I've got several ideas about how to do that. We also need to change the enrollment strategies so that we integrate schools. There's things we can do around prioritizing enrollment and changing boundaries to help integrate schools. And the last thing I'll note is, some schools are already doing this. We need to provide more focus on creating a supportive team around some students to help them get ready to go into the classroom. They come from a lot of unstable situations. We need to put together a supportive team full of, and it could be social workers, psychologists, speech therapists, speech pathologists that can help kids get ready to go into the classroom. So we need to put the resources together to create the support team to get kids ready to learn so all that responsibility doesn't fall on teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Winston?
Yes, you know, a lot of people have made a lot of great points of things that we can do. You know, hiring more Black and Brown teachers that will help the students, which you also have to keep in mind that just hiring more Black and Brown teachers alone, it's not going to solve the problem because you can have Black and Brown teachers that look just like you for six out of seven classes, but that one teacher who isn't culturally competent in that one class can ruin your day and your education and traumatize you for the rest of your life. And so it's not about who you see, it's about what you see when you're in that class, you know, how they act towards you and things like that. So we just have to make sure that all of our teachers are not racist. They're culturally competent. We have a racial equity training in our district. I was on the racial equity team for two years at Christmas Attics, and we have a lot of staff, and trying to get all of our staff through that training, it's some work. And let me tell you, there is a lot that you learn that even as a Black man, I learned a lot about myself and the things that I say and the things that I do, and it's those small things that can make a difference. You know, you don't realize, growing up, what someone else's childhood is like. When you ask kids, you know, after fall break, what did you do or where did you go on fall break? You know, some kids had to go work. Some kids, the furthest they went is grandma's house. I know growing up, for me, you know, taking a trip an hour out of town was like amazing to go to my grandma's house, and I thought that was something. I didn't know about Disney World and things like that. We also, you know, individualizing our education. We know that right now, approximately 70% of our students are reading at grade level by third grade, but we don't track that data afterwards. And we know, you know, our textbooks, for instance, Biology freshman year, it's standards for freshmen to take Biology. But if you can't read at grade level your freshman year, you're going to struggle in Biology, and it's going to set you up for failure. So making sure we individualize education for every student and putting them in classes that they can be successful in while we work to figure out where they are and get them to where they need to be.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith?
Yeah, so when we talk about racial equity gaps, we're really talking about educational equity gaps. So we know that the majority of Black, poor, and Brown students attend neighborhood schools, yet our neighborhood schools, they're underfunded compared to our magnet program, which get additional funds. We know that our magnet programs are extremely segregated. Those are two things that we can stop right now and take care of and then move forward. Everyone's suggestions and the racial equity policies, the Black Lives Matter resolution, all of these things are amazing things that need to be implemented. But we need to make sure that it's not just a piece of paper and that it's not just a statement, that every single decision as we move forward as a district keeps those things in mind and that we aren't keeping the status quo, keeping our schools segregated, and increasing those inequities that exist within the district. We need to be really looking at the schools that serve our most marginalized students. We need to look at the schools that are serving our Black and Brown students and really provide those schools with the resources and educators needed to educate our children. It's not all about equal funding or the same number of teachers in a building. It's about equity and providing students what they need to be successful. So we really have to take a look at all of our schools. Are they meeting students' needs? If not, what can we do? And we have to look at all policies to see where we can have improvements.
Thank you. Commissioner Arnold?
Yes, I can't disagree with anything that's previously been said, but I can tell you, I believe we have a great blueprint to move forward. I think our racial equity policies that need to be taken to the next level. I think the racial equity training done by the Racial Equity Institute, and that work led by Dr. Pat Kane, is very important. And we've moved from that just being a pilot program to currently every IPS employee, that includes custodians, police officers, every IPS employee now is required to go through the racial equity training. So that's very important. I think the racial equity policy covers everything, from vendors, who are we buying supplies from, curriculum, human resources, professional development, our police department, discipline, all of those issues. And I think as a grandparent of a child that's in a choice school, I can't say it's okay for my granddaughter to have a great experience and then have someone say, "Well, if you're in a neighborhood school, just fight to keep that neighborhood school a failing school." That it's okay. Fight to keep that principal, fight to keep those teachers, and keep that school the way that it is as a failing school. I can't do that as a school board member. I believe we have the tools that we need, but we have to move it to the next level. And I think even just getting, you know, we talk about getting more students in our choice schools, in our high-achieving schools. There's a great deal in those schools, there's a great deal of learning inequity in those schools. So it's not enough to just get our students into the great schools. We have to also make sure that they're getting the highest opportunity to be successful in those schools. But most of all, as a school board member, I can't support failing schools that serve large numbers of students of color.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Arnold. I'll now move on to, we'll now move on to our next question. So at Short Ridge, we still have very strong feelings about the high school closings that took place a few years ago. Now, there's talk about closing even more neighborhood schools. What would be your approach towards navigating school closings? And I believe we'll start again with Commissioner Arnold.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I've lived through school closings, and I know how drastic those are. In my community, not only did they close our high school, but IPS closed every elementary school in our neighborhood. It was an economic development issue. Businesses left, people left, buildings were boarded up, schools were boarded up and blighted in neighborhoods. So I fully understand, you know, the devastation. I think what we have to do is continue to attract students to come back to IPS. You know, one of the things with innovation schools is that innovation schools have attracted more students to come back to the district. We have to do that. We have to look at what are our offerings. We have to look at, I would never support, if we have to close schools, I will not support closing schools in our neighborhood schools. We can't do that. That's not the answer. We can't go into poor neighborhoods that serve children of color and say, "Well, we're just going to close your school because it's failing." We have to figure out how to make that better. And if we need to close schools, then we need to look at closing magnet schools that it doesn't matter where they're located. They can be put in another building or share buildings or whatever. Now, we, back with closing the high schools, the issue was we had seats in IPS high schools for 15,000 students, and we had less than 5,000 high school students. So many of our high schools were functioning and operating at 25 and 30% capacity. That took a lot of resources away from classrooms. Students couldn't have AP courses because there weren't enough students at that school to have an AP. So we have to do better academically. We have to figure out how to attract. And if we do ever have to close schools... So we have to do better academically. We have to figure out how to attract. And if we do ever have to close schools, we cannot make those closures in our neighborhood schools where they will do damage, not only to the students that live there, but those communities as well.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Smith?
So I, I think that when we look at closing schools, we really have to look at where the greatest needs are first. So there needs to be community engagement, parent engagement, and really looking at needs. We could also look at partnering with additional outside community partnerships. Um, I know that when the high schools were closing, there was a lot of suggestions and talk about trying to get different, um, nonprofits and organizations to do share buildings or maybe move some magnet programs that were kind of outgrowing the space they were in to share buildings with high schools. So I think really being strategic about how we use our buildings going forward is going to be really important. Um, I, I definitely wouldn't support closing any type of neighborhood schools. Again, I have to agree with Diane about moving magnet programs to where they are more spread out throughout the district to attract additional parents to those programs. Um, I, I, I think that what we have to remember is when we, when we close schools, but then bring on additional charter schools as innovation schools, we are prioritizing that charter school over the neighborhood, um, high school. Um, we're, we saw that all over the place. In the same year that we closed high schools, we brought on additional innovation schools that were already existing charters. Those students may add numbers to the district, but they're not adding additional funding. They're actually taking a funding away from our neighborhood schools when we bring charters on. So we have to really be strategic about every single type of community partnership or charter partnership that we enter into to ensure that they are fiscally responsible and IPS is getting the most bang for our buck of bringing on innovation schools. We need to make sure that our, our students, the students in IPS schools are being served first. Um, we also need to be looking at what, what issues are causing us to have to make the decisions to close schools? What can we do about that? If it's that we don't have enough students in that building, what's keeping parents away? You know, I mean, we have a huge exodus of parents after eighth grade from IPS schools. Why? Where are they going? What are they doing? You know, I, I've talked to parents who left IPS and they said they were never asked why they were leaving IPS. And I think that that's something that we really need to look at and we really need to do is why aren't people staying at IPS schools? And then go from there. I mean, i- if it's that folks want a private school, then we need to see what they feel is better about a private school. If they're going for a charter school, we need to find out what it is that they're going to the specific charter school for. And really be, it, it really all comes back to if we are providing a great equitable education to every single student, we're going to have full classrooms and we're going to have full school.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now move back to the at-large district. Uh, Mr. Allen?
Yes, uh, driving resources to the classroom is going to definitely be one of my top priorities when elected to the board. Uh, spending money on underused facilities means that obviously we have fewer resources are going where they need most to support students. Uh, historically, we know that, uh, black and brown communities have been disproportionately uh, impacted by school closures and consolidations. As a board member, I will ensure that, uh, decisions to make close buildings are made equitable in a manner with robust public input. So that means having panels and forums and discussions to make sure that we're getting buy-in uh, from the parents, the teachers and those businesses in the community and those neighbors so that we don't, uh, continue to make these buildings eyesores in the community and create additional disparities. Furthermore, you know, I agree with, uh, what some of the others have said in supporting identifying collaborations and innovative partnerships with community organizations, other nonprofits that can avoid us shutting the building down, which would also be seen, you know, as a community asset and creatively using those buildings when possible.
Thank you very much. Now, uh, sorry, uh, Commissioner Gore?
I have a concern about closing buildings. I do understand as a board member, it is my fiduciary responsibility to be able to look at what the budget is saying. If the school is full or if the school is having some other problems. My concern is closing our schools. I attended the last graduation at Broad Ripple, which was one of the last schools that we closed as a high school. Not only did it affect the staff, it affected the students. And when you look at the Broad Ripple area, Broad Ripple is a big loss in that area. So it affects the community as well. I say if we have to close the building, we need to have parental engagement. We have stakeholders that also have something to say about the schools that are in that area. I have a real problem though. Once we close those schools, opening up other schools as high schools or other schools and using those resources for those schools when we possibly could have maybe did some readjusting, thought through differently and kept the school open, used it with other resources in that school. But I really have a problem when we have to close schools and then we vote later to open other high schools and we have already, um, caused those students to have to, a lot of them left IPS. A lot of them went to schools where they didn't feel very comfortable. And so it is a big job and it's a big responsibility of the board to be able to make sure that we're physically responsible, making decisions for our students before we just inadvertently close a school.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll move now to District One. Uh, Mr. Pritchard?
Okay, well, actually I agree with much of what has been said so far. You know, this is a, um, traumatic process for the community and it is the last resort. No one wants to go through this. I'm sure it was grueling for the board to make those decisions. It's, it is a terrible, uh, thing to happen to the community for the parents and teachers and students to go through. So, you know, it's clearly a last resort. I will say the funding follows the student. We need more, uh, partly why this is happening is, is a financial problem. So we need to deliver a great product because we need to increase revenue for the district. That will help alleviate a lot of these problems. Now, I believe we do deliver a great product and we need to change the narrative and, and be more, uh, forceful about all of the great things and all the talented teachers and administrators at IPS because we don't give them enough credit for all of the great work that they're doing. So we need to try to change that narrative about, um, about IPS and restore some faith in members of the community that have lost faith in IPS. Uh, secondly, we have to make really smart financial decisions. It's important that we have people on the board that can read a balance sheet, that can understand financial statements, that know about making smart investment decisions, that understand some of the bonds, uh, the process of financing through public, uh, bonds and municipal markets. That, uh, because those are really important decisions and we need to be really creative and smart and long-term, use our long-term thinking about those decisions. Third thing is enroll Indy is amassing a tremendous amount of data that we have yet to really tap into that tells us about where kids are moving from the, within the neighborhood, where they're going in different schools, even when they leave schools, where they're transferring to. So we need to be really creative and smart about using that data to help us make facility decisions and financial decisions. And we're starting to do that, but we need to use that data, which really evaluates the entire market in terms of making decisions about schools and finance, finances. And then the last I'll say is we need to involve partners. And in some cases, that may be using parts of the building as, um, office or space for, to providing services to students. And, uh, you know, we need to really be thoughtful about what other partners can we include in the school that are already working with students that can help alleviate some of the facility costs that we're accumulating.
Thank you. Uh, now we'll, um, move on to Mr. Randall?
Um, yes, so I think that, you know, first off, we need to have, uh, a focus on equity-based, um, budgeting. So a lot of what's already been said around finances and budgeting, but we have to look at how we are allocating money. And a lot of that also includes how we are, um, allocating salaries specifically to central office staff. You know, we have an increase of high-paid salary positions in the central office while we are closing schools. And to me, that just doesn't make sense as somebody who's looking, you know, from the outside and not internally. I think we also have to look at how we can have offensive community engagement. I know that when we had this last round of high school closings, there were community conversations. However, a lot of what I heard from the community is that it, it appeared as though the, the board already knew what decisions were going to be made and it was really just a function of saying that, you know, the community was engaged. Um, we have to look at the safety impact. I don't think I've heard, um, anybody from the board, and I could be wrong, but going into detail about the realities of geographic clashing of students and schools. You're bringing students from the far east side who are now attending the west side. There are cultural clashes that are going to happen. And I don't think that I heard that conversation whatsoever. And so when we see an increase of, you know, discipline and increase of students, you know, getting into trouble, a lot of that is stemming because you're bringing kids from sides of town or, um, different experiences that we haven't acknowledged that there are things that will happen when they're being brought together. And I think that we just need to, uh, realize that there are better ways to maximize that space. I really agree with what Commissioner Gore said. I don't understand how we close these schools, but then we reopen them and allow other uses of them. So we just have to look at a better way to, um, A, prevent the exodus of students like Chrissy said, uh, but better use the spaces, but be financially responsible, but it has to be equity-centered. You know, we, we tout a lot of these other programs and we highlight these, uh, other models, um, specifically, um, you know, the CFI models, the Butler Lab models, which are great models, are great schools, but we don't talk about other neighborhood schools in that same positive light. It's, it has became this competition of great schools and then neighborhood schools. That is a, I, I, I'm offended by that because I worked at a neighborhood school and that school was amazing. So we have to, we have to even speak equity when we're talking about the schools in our district. Because if inequity and competition is coming out of the mouths of board members, what do we think parents are going to think?
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, we'll now go to, uh, District Two, Mr. Winston?
Yes, so, um, I'm not voting to close any neighborhood schools, you know, those are so important, you know, for, um, home values for our communities and even for potential employers. No employer is going to come start a new business and bring a lot of jobs to a neighborhood that doesn't have schools. Here on the far east side, here in District Two, we have no high schools. They closed our two high schools back in twenty seventeen, um, when they both closed those schools. We now have students who, you know, they may have gone to another school through enrolled Indy, but a lot of these, um, students, because of where they live at, it was closer to go to Lawrence, it was closer to go to Warren. And so enroll Indy is not going to capture that data. Even this year, there were so many kids that I worked with that I have seen that are now in Lawrence. They're in Warren, they're in Wayne, they're in Decatur. And they still live in IPS district, but you're not going to get that data through enrolled Indy because they don't use enroll Indy. You're only going to get data from enrolled Indy if it's a charter school that uses it and from IPS schools. To what Brandon said about the clash, I saw that year after year at Attics. We had kids coming from Thirty Fourth and Lafayette and Forty Second and Post. Those are two very different cultures clashing every single year because you closed both of their high schools, Northwest High School, Arlington and John Marshall, you know? We talk about investing in our neighborhood schools and how important they are, but when you look at how much money is allocated to these schools per pupil, not only are neighborhood schools getting less, but when you look at the growth points that each school gets, it almost goes up the more funding they get. And our neighborhood schools, especially the ones that serve black and brown students, are the ones who have the least amount of funding, but the schools who need less funding and don't need as much support are the ones who get the most funding. Some of them are getting almost sixteen thousand dollars a kid, but they have the highest test scores. But our black and brown neighborhood schools, they're getting roughly ten thousand a student and they're not getting the supports. So I'm happy, you know, our, we have some folks who now value our neighborhood schools, but we have to, we can't just say it during the election season. We need those and that support during the board meetings when it comes time to vote for our schools and to truly support them.
Thank you. Um, so for the, uh, the last regular question, um, uh, this is something that's very important to me, you know, as a student government member. How would you make sure that, and for I guess the Shortridge community and as a whole, how would you make sure that students in IPS have a voice in the decision-making? And for this one, we will go first to, um, uh, you again, Mr. Winston?
Yes, I think, um, part of that is by, you know, having a superintendent student advisory committee. And I know we have one now, but actually having one that's intentional about getting student voice. It's hard to have a committee when it's only one or two kids from every school, especially when you think of schools that, a high school that only has, um, a small enrollment like George Washington having the same representation as students at tech. You have to allocate those seats based on where the students are. Um, because the decisions are going to affect every school differently, especially the programs that they have. But then, you know, the way that we pick our students, it has to be an equitable way. It can't be something where, you know, you have a school principal picking their favorite students who, you know, they might put something in their ear that they need this be said in front of the superintendent. We need someone who's going to represent the students and their peers, not our administrators, okay? And so having that student advisory committee and opening it up to where it's fair and equitable, giving them that voice. I know when I was in school, my superintendent had one and we helped make shape a lot of decisions in our school district because we had that open forum with her to where, you know, you can hear things from the students that you're not going to get from an adult because an adult's there to protect their job and to make their school look good. Whereas students, you know, we got to bring them in, going to our schools as board members. Working at the schools, I almost never saw board members there visiting the schools, going out and engaging, you know, with our communities. I've seen, um, Commissioner Gore so many times at basketball games interacting with community members. And, you know, our board members have to do things like that. Going to the sporting events, going to our community events, meeting our residents where they are. We can't expect them to come to us, sign up and only get three minutes to talk about every issue. We have to go out there and meet them where they are. We have to recognize people are working at night. So finding those opportunities to meet with people who work at night in the mornings, on the weekends, and it can't be set up by the district every time. We have to take that own initiative on ourselves to go meet the community where they are.
Thank you. And, um, next we'll go to, uh, sorry. Um, next we go to, uh, Ms. Smith?
So I, I agree with DeCuevas on this. Um, I think that we need to have superintendent, school board, you know, whoever it be, panels, um, of community members, students, parents in separate, in separate groups. Um, and it can't be just whoever is volunteering or whoever's been chosen. We need to be really intentional in reaching out and getting those student voices of the kids that aren't seen as the kid that normally goes to a superintendent's Aren't seen as the kid that normally goes to a superintendent's panel, or they aren't the kid that a teacher would choose. To attend something and represent the school. Because we have more kids in our schools that a teacher's not going to choose than we have a teacher would choose them. So we need to be really intentional on reaching out to all of our students and hearing their voices, building those relationships with. Their parents, with community members and. Centering their voices in decisions that we make. Because every single decision that's made by a school board has an effect on a student in a classroom somewhere. So we have to really see and meet our students where they're at, find out needs, and give them a seat at the table. I mean, a- as a parent in IPS, I feel like we're not given a seat at the table. Engagement is performative. You know, somebody else made the comment that they have discussions or m- meetings. And it's just to say that they did it. And that's really what it feels like. So we have to be very intentional with our engagement and communication with everyone in the district. And really going after and being incredibly proactive, especially when it comes to our students, because they're not going to come to us. A lot, I mean, you, you know, you're one of the only students I've ever seen come to a school board meeting when it wasn't about something specifically with that school. So we have to be very intentional about getting to those students and reaching every kid where they're at to hear their voice.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Arnold.
Uh, yes, I I believe that the student voice and student participation has to start at the school level. We have five thousand high school students. And so, you know, we can't have a forum where all five thousand students uh come in one, one common meeting. I think we have to have building leaders that support uh student voices. I think Shortridge is an exceptional example of that. I think you've had principals who have valued the student voice, and I think your school has figured out how to make that work. And support that. And I think every high school, that should be part of what a building leader does. Is to hear the voice, bring all the voices together, and then make that. Then we have to figure out how to connect that to the district's level, whether that is. That uh, school board members and the administration come out to every school. And have that dialogue and have focus groups or have town hall meetings with each high school. Uh, and even some of our elementary schools. We've got some great student government in our elementary schools that are successful. I I value uh the input of the community on every decision. But we have to understand that we're never going to make everybody happy. And we can have ten people like one idea and ten people like another idea. And then as a school board member, we have to make the best decision that we can make. So I very much value input from parents, input from community, input from students. But those aren't always going to agree. And I think we have to figure out. Uh, start at the school level, build that sense of community, that sense of. Of being able to be vocal, being able to express, and then figure out how to make that connection to the district.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now move to our at-large seat, Commissioner Gore.
I feel that our students in some instances, and especially you Elan. I always love having you come to our meetings. I know that you're going to share some thing that is going to hopefully make a difference. Not only to your school, but to us as board members, things that we need to be looking at. Christmas Attics had a group of young women who came and talked about having problems on dates and. Uh, date abusiveness or date rape and those kinds of things, which we ended up having a policy set up for those. I think student councils in schools are very good sources. I was thinking as our other commissioners were talking, we're in a new normal now. And maybe we haven't been able to reach each student, our parent. But virtual now, we can possibly set up some virtual uh board conversations with our students. They might be able to, one night, just say invite the board and we just dialogue with them. They give us what they need to let us hear and we kind of share how we feel. So there are some new ways that we will be able hopefully to talk to our students in the new normal. I think student advocacy is a great way uh for students. I've always tried to uh suggest that we might even get to the place where we have a student sit on the board. With us, uh, getting the basics of how uh boards are ran. And it's a good way to see policies in the making. So I think being creative, uh, not only with board members going to schools. And now that we might be restricted at this point, it still is a good way to have uh inter. Uh, connection with our students. So um, thinking out of the box. We may be able to use our virtual way to be able to hear from our students, but I think it's important. You are the ones that are on the front line every day. You know what you want and what you would like to see in those schools, so.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Allen.
Yeah, I agree with, you know, mostly everything that has been said. Uh, what I would add and put emphasis on. Is that we need to have a student voice on the board uh for public schools. It is just crazy to me that we have a group of decision-makers. And none of the decision-makers look like the people that are mostly affected by the decisions. So I would push even at the State House that we could even change the code that would incorporate. A student uh voice on the actual uh school board. The other thing that I think we can do is be creative and allowing uh students to serve as an honorary commissioner. Or superintendent for the day, so they really get a full grasp and understand of what the people uh who are making decisions then do on a, a, a day-to-day basis. And then two, being creative in educating and reaching them. So uh, it's good to have events. We have to go to where the, where the young people are. So we have to go to the skating rink, we have to go to the canal. We have to go where the young people are and really get the pulse of what they're thinking and what they believe and what they want to see.
Thank you. Uh, next, we'll move on to um, uh, we'll move on to Mr. Randall.
Um, yes, so I'm, I'm excited to hear other folks talk about uh putting a student on the board. Because I have been saying that for years, years. Um, because it makes no sense. I'm tired of adults talking for kids. It's annoying and we do it all the time and it has got to stop. Um, what we have to also do is we have to redefine what leadership looks like. Um, a lot of times, uh, we do look at the students who have the high GPAs, the scholarship applications. Um, and those students are needed and their voices are valuable. However, we never uh shift an intentionality uh for students who have been arrested. Students who have gun charges, students who have robbed somebody, their voices are just as valuable. And a lot of times, we only pick those students to check off a quota. Um, I remember I attended the District One uh meeting over here at Tech High School. When I asked Superintendent Johnson if she was going to have students from alternative schools. Or students who have been in the system on the council. And the response was there were two slots reserved for students from, I think, PSA. And while I appreciate the notion, that's unacceptable. Um, I used to work for Public Allies and our mantra was everyone leads. So until we actually live up to that and show that leadership is not just a specific prepackage. That we're constantly denigrating students um who don't fit that mold. Um, we have to see value in all students, even some students that folks might call unstable. Everyone has the ability to lead. We also need to have a requirement for board members to be in the community. I have hosted a community forum called True Dialogue for the last four years. And this last one, we invited every board member to attend and there was not, I think, I think Commissioner. Um, I think Commissioner Coons was the only one who attended. And so that was frustrating to see that there was an opportunity for IPS board members to attend a youth-led event. And almost nobody showed up. I think the last thing is students have to have actual impact on decision-making. The advisory councils are great, but if they're not contributing to actual policy change, actual systemic input. Then it's just a pretty thing on paper and it's not worth a whole lot of value. So they have to have actual impact. And the last thing, there should be a, a, a slot at all board meetings for a student to report out. So whether that's a report out from their school, a report out from a, a council meeting. There needs to be designated time set aside for students to speak at the board hearings. And allow that engagement with board members and community members.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Pritchard.
Well, I love everything that's been said so far, so I don't have a lot of new information to add. But I think one of the uh primary weaknesses for the board and IPS has been that we have difficulty engaging. With the community and that's parents and students and neighborhood leaders, you know. That has not been a strong suit of IPS and including all those parties in decision-making and really engaging intentionally with them. So I love the idea of having a student on the board. I love the idea of allocating more time at committee meetings to students. I love the idea of maybe it's a committee of the board that's made up entirely of students. And figuring out a creative way of making that committee more inclusive and representative of everyone, of as many as you can of the. Different uh students at, at IPS. And I also like the idea of can we figure out how to use technology, because we do have almost thirty thousand students. How do we use technology to make the process of communicating and be included, be included in decision-making at, at IPS? How do we use technology to make that, to streamline that process and make it more inclusive and transparent? So a lot of great ideas, and I think we ought to, we really ought to do a better job at engaging students and parents and neighborhood leaders.
Thank you very much. I think that's everyone for this question. Uh, so now we're going to move into a sort of different format. We're going to move into our closing statements. So these are going to be a little bit more strictly timed, thirty seconds exactly, and everybody will just have thirty seconds to say, you know. To just give a sort of closing, I suppose. So I think we'll start, um. Uh, we'll start again from this time from District One with uh District One again, uh with Mr. Pritchard.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say again, thank you for doing this a lot. It's a great idea and helps to um. You know, work towards engaging students more, which is, uh, your last question was a great one. So um, you know, like I said, I'm an IPS parent. I've got two kids in IPS. I'm really concerned about public education and changing the narrative around public education. Uh, also a long-term volunteer and I've been working in community development in the city, working with neighborhood-based groups. So I'm really looking forward to helping IPS trend, helping IPS engage better with broad groups. And uh, you know, I, I'm primarily here to just provide an expertise to the board that we don't, haven't always had. Around fine, around the uh financial aspect and then uh providing it another parental voice on the board too.
Thank you very much.
For the opportunity.
Um, I'm not, uh, Mr. Randall.
Yes, um, so a lot of times we use the phrase that it takes a village to raise a child. So I will be the first to say, I am not a parent. Um, however, over the last thirteen years, I've worked with thousands of students and been able to work with their families. So while I am not a parent, I have committed to be a youth worker, to be a family connector. And to be a community advocate and organizer. And I do that seven days a week and I am available twenty-four hours a day. This is not something that is a nine-to-five for me. This is not a separation of personal and professional. This is my life and I have committed every waking moment to serving the young people and their families in this community for over a decade. So while I am not a parent, I am definitely involved and visible in many lives of young people. And I just appreciate this opportunity and vote for Brandon Randall, District One.
Thank you. Uh, when I move to District Two, Mr. Winston.
Yes, um, so let's thank you all for hosting this and for those of you who are attending, thank you for watching. Um. You know, just like Brandon, you know, I've been working with students for the past couple of years, uh, more than a couple, actually. Um, and I enjoy what I do, but I'm also uh more interested in making sure they're successful when they leave high school. Whether it's they go to college, they go to two-year school, they go learn a trade, they go to um, find a job. Or they go join our armed services. I want to make sure they're successful regardless of what they choose to do. I want to make sure that, you know, we don't have any more hashtags about our kids and that we're actually um ensuring equity in all of our schools. Um, we don't need to keep trying to repeat the past and offering up failed policies that don't work. We need to focus on achieving and improving everyone's academic outcomes for those students here at IPS. Because we can and we should be the premier school district in the state. I'll also show up, just like I did today. District Two needs a representative who's going to show up for them. Not just in the community on the election trail, but during board members. Um, you can learn more about me on my website, www.winstonforips.com.
Uh, thank you. Now we'll move on to District Four, Commissioner Arnold.
Um, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity uh to be with you this afternoon, although I'm traveling. Um, I think it's great. One of my first forums I ever did was with students at Gambold. So I just ask for your support. Uh, I think my experience as a community uh center director. And my experience on the board, uh, and my desire to see every student in IPS. Achieve a high-quality education. Education is a quality of life issue. It is a right that every student should have. I very much support that. And. Believe that I'm the right person to ensuring that racial equity is a reality and not just an idea. As Pat Payne said, it's a movement, not a moment, and we need to keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Smith.
Yeah, so um, I, I, again, like everyone else has said, I want to thank you guys for this and for the opportunity to connect with voters. In this time of not being able to do so in person so much. Um, I, I think that especially for District Four, we have had many, many, many years. Of decisions being made that have gotten IPS to the point we're at right now. So we can't just come along and say that we're going to do something different moving forward when we've had so many years to make changes. And those changes haven't happened yet. So. You know, folks have to really look at what they have as a priority for schools and what they have as a priority for education. And I believe that an equitable education is due to all of our students. I believe that racial equity and equity in general, when it comes to everyone. Isn't just something that we write on a resolution and that we, we talk about when we have major issues that are happening in our society. It has to be something that we make consistent decisions following day in and day out. And everything has to be based on what is providing the best education to our students. And I think that we've had enough of that not happening. So, you know, if you would like to hear more from me or if you would like to get in contact with me. You can always go to my Facebook page, Christina Smith for IPS, or christinasmithforips.com. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Now for the at-large seat, Commissioner Gore.
Thank you, Elan. This has been quite an evening. I have enjoyed. And you have shown what IPS is about. You are one of the students that we know is beginning to show that there is some leadership there. When I talk about IPS, I am very passionate. I love the students. I care about each one. I want them to be able to discover programs that will help our students to be productive. I want, I talk about legacy, uh, say reclaiming our legacy, and that's because. I want, I talk about legacy, uh, say reclaiming our legacy. And that's because I know that there are students who have gone through the IPS school system and have done well and are still doing well. I want that to be the legacy of every student. I had my time at IPS and I think being a representative on the IPS school board is a real positive thing. And I think a lot of our students can do that as well. I'd also like to uh, say that I'm looking for the future. And fight for the future of our students, even though we are in this new normal. There's an opportunity still for our students to show progression in their academic as well as go forward. And we don't want to see them regress. I'd just like to say, if you'd like to contact me, go to @Gore4, the number four, IPS. Our, go to Gore, Elizabeth Gore at IPS on the Facebook. Thank you, and I look forward to being on the board next time. So November the third, you know what box to check. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Allen?
Thank you.
Yes, I echo the sentiments of everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to share and exchange. Uh, I am, uh, as I indicated earlier, I've spent my entire life working in youth, working with youth uh, for my days at the Indiana House of Representatives, uh, as the Director of the Page Program. Uh, working at the Marion County Juvenile Detention Center, uh, working with Indiana Youth Service Association as the Director of Anti-Human Trafficking Initiatives. And even through my foundation, the Kenneth Allen Foundation for Entrepreneurship, where we've had the privilege of teaching over ten thousand young people entrepreneurship and financial literacy uh, in IPS as well as the other surrounding school districts uh, in central Indiana. And IPS currently has three Es. They want uh, once students have matriculated through our district to be one, possibly enrolled in a four-year or higher learning institution, possibly be enlisted in the military uh, or employed with a livable wage. I'm running because I want to add an other E and that's entrepreneurship education. I think it's very important that we teach financial literacy and entrepreneurship to our students, particularly our students of color who have an interest of wanting to know how what they're learning in the classroom is going to make them money. And I think by instilling entrepreneurship and financial literacy, starting at Kennedy Garden and continuing to build upon that, that when our students graduate, if they don't want to enroll, if they don't want to enlist, they don't want to be employed, they can employ themselves. So I hope that on November the fourth, you vote for Kenneth Allen for Indianapolis Public School Board at large. If you would like to, if you have a question that came up, uh, you can get it answered here. You can follow us on Facebook at Kenneth Allen for IPS. We also have a website at Kenneth Allen for IPS. Uh, you can also reach us via email at allenforips@gmail. And unlike, you know, some of your national candidates, you can contact us and ask us questions directly. So my number is three one seven eight two one seven four eight four. Thank you again.
Uh, thank you very much, everybody. This has been a wonderful evening and it's been a wonderful opportunity for the Shortridge community and IPS community at large to have an opportunity to uh, hear the candidates running for school board. Just as a reminder, Election Day is coming up soon. It's November third. And uh, all people in IPS have the option to vote for uh, the at-large candidates. And then uh, this, and then Districts One, Two, and Four, I believe, are up for election. You can see which district you are and the map that I posted, uh, that the student government's posted in the comments on the video. And again, on behalf of the student government, I'd like to thank everybody for watching and thank you very much for the candidates. Have a good evening, everybody.